I say we because I'm technically a member.
I'm going to call this meeting of the Montague County Board of Education to order. All rise for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start off today's meeting with a moment of silence for Joan Summers, a former business and English teacher at Morgantown High School who passed away on August 8th. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Got delegation, one delegation this evening, and I'm going to read the delegation thing. I want to, I want to, I always read this and I feel like I'm kind of saying negative. We really appreciate when people come in and talk to the board. It's a, it's an honor that people feel enough about what they're passionate about to come in. But I want to read this so it's standard protocol. So speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While it is not our intent to stifle public comments, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you're unsure of the legal ramifications of what you're about to say, we urge you to consult your legal advisor. Tonight, we have David Vilek and he is, his concern is autism education.
Hello, everybody. My name is David Vilek and we just moved to Morgantown last month from Orlando, Florida. And this is my son Tiger. And Tiger is autistic. He's very limited verbal and he has a special talent and that's hyper-focus and hard work. And that has enabled him to be able to draw pictures like this. So Tiger drew this last year at a recommendation of a Disney artist and he's now the youngest member of the International Society of Caricature Artists. Because we got into town before the deadline for the state fair, Tiger, we turned in his Mickey Face Off drawing that's got four million views on Instagram and he got, he got best to show at the West Virginia State Fair. So welcome to West Virginia. Tiger has been featured on TV numerous times, all the major channels nationally. His T-shirts were in Walmart nationwide this past spring as a project we did with Autism Speaks. He's done all the major Comic Cons on the East Coast, including New York Comic Con last year. Tiger's famous for being able to draw any cartoon character upside down. Like I said, he can also draw them with their face coming off. He can, he can even draw them, oops, dissected. But academically, you know, he's, he got hell back last year in Florida, so he repeated third grade and he just started his school today at Eastwood, is it Eastwood Elementary? And we, we don't know what's going to happen for him here, but we're very happy to be here. He kind of got about as big in Orlando as he could get. He's got 65,000 followers on IG. He's got a lot of fans, you know, in the New York, Philly, Washington DC area. We should be traveling to all the Comic Cons, going to Washington DC to do autism advocacy and lobbying there. He's been invited to see the Autism Caucus several times. Unfortunately, we live way too far away, but here I think we're close enough that we could drive there in the morning and come back at night. So I just wanted to introduce you to Tiger and that we're here in town and you should expect to hear more from him. And I don't know, he's the sweetest, nicest little boy. He just is just incredibly talented. He's got his own characters. Anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Okay, superintendents, school performance, student outcomes, academics and those student assessment scores.
All right, by popular demand, we're going to bring Courtney Crawford back to you again to talk about our student assessment scores and she's going to share those with you right now. Courtney, command performance.
All right. So thank you for having me again to come back and talk about the highlights from our state assessment results from last year. These went live on the state Zoom West Virginia website the last week. My days are kind of running together right now. So they went live last week and now they're public to anybody who's interested in looking. The information to keep in mind is that the state assessment results posted reflect only students who were enrolled for a minimum of 135 days in our schools. So these are not all students who tested in West Virginia. These are the students who spent the bulk of their academic year last year with us in Mon County. So when we're looking at the assessments that are included in these measures, our summative assessments include the following. They include the West Virginia General Summative Assessment. They also include the West Virginia Alternate Summative Assessment, which is the assessment for our students in the 1% population. And they include the SAT School Day for our students in the 11th grade. We also administer the ALPA-21 assessment to our English language learners. However, those results only fold into our accountability data. They do not fold into our state assessment summary. So looking at our, this is our traditional state-county comparison. Montague County is represented in the green. The state of West Virginia is represented in the blue. And this is a by-grade level comparison for both reading and mathematics. So you can see that the county average is above the state average in both reading and in math across every single subject, or excuse me, every single grade level. Something that we're excited to see is when we're looking at progress over time, we are seeing more of an increase. We did see more of an increase this past school year from the previous school year. If you look at the dates here, there's a line that is drawn in 2017-18, which was the first year of our current assessment series. And you can see that prior to 2020, the last year that the assessment was administered prior to 2020 was in 2019 and we are back to those same scores now after this past school year. So any slight dip in our assessment results, we are now caught back up and we're ready to keep rocket shipping ahead in our progress. So this is another breakdown. I did several mashing, I did some mashing of some screenshots here for, to compare West Virginia and Mon County data. So in addition to a scale score, students also receive a performance level and they can be one of four different performance levels. There's does not meet the standard, which is represented here in red, partially meets the standard, which is represented in yellow, meets the standard, which is in blue, and exceeds the standard, which is in green. So Montague County has the box around it, that is our column. And for all grade levels in math and all grade levels in reading, Montague County had the highest percentage of students in the, in the state at scoring at the exceed standard level. So we had the highest frequency of students scoring at the highest achievement level. We were also in the lowest percentage of students or of districts in the does not meet the standard level. So we had, we were among the lowest districts in, as far as percentage of students in that lowest performance level. Our 11th grade students, as I mentioned before, take the SAT School Day. On the SAT School Day, students are measured in evidence-based reading and writing and mathematics. Additionally, there are items on the assessment that address different, or address different concepts across the whole high school curriculum. So students also receive sub-scores for, for science, for example. This, just as a note, this was the first year that we did not administer the writing component of the SAT School Day. So the test was a little bit shorter. That's just a little sidebar, not, doesn't really relate to the results. One piece that we can report in addition to proficiency levels, which we get from our state proficiency scale scores, is the college readiness benchmark. So the college readiness benchmark on college board assessments indicate or predicts a student's likelihood of earning a passing grade of C or higher in an entry-level college course. So from, for our 11th grade students at the end of last school year, 57% of our 11th grade students met the college readiness benchmark for English, for English, which is the evidence-based reading and writing. 33% met that benchmark for math and 32% met both benchmarks.
And where did the US Test Takeer, that information just came from that testing site?
So this, no, this information comes from College Board's website.
Okay, so on College Board's website, so...
So of the students, so I should have explained that, I apologize. So the data reflected here is for all students in the United States who took the SAT School Day on that same day. So in, across the nation, 27% of students met both benchmarks, whereas 32% met them in Montague County schools. 51% met them for English evidence-based reading and writing, whereas in Montague County, 57% met that same indicator. And for math, 28% across the United States and 33% in Montague County. So a nice difference of at least 5% in each area. Thank you for catching that, I should have explained that. Another piece of the SAT School Day that allows us some celebration is looking at our students with relation to promise eligibility. And so this is one of the pieces that makes the SAT School Day have a little bit more of weight for our students because it comes with some, some money attached to it potentially. So for our students in the 11th grade, 218, which is 30% of our 11th grade students are considered promise, promise eligible based on their SAT School Day results from this past year. Additionally, 380 students, about 53%, met at least one of the three indicators, which are scores in the English, either, they either met the English score, the math score, or the composite score. And 38 students met two, so they just have one left to meet to make that become eligible. This is also an increase of 20 students from the previous year. So again, another growth indicator. So looking at just some celebrations across the county, again, we have scores at the top of the state. We scored, as far as looking at proficiency levels for students in grades three through eight and 11, we ranked number two in both ELA and math and we were first in the state in our science scores. We were also number one in the state as, at the percentage of students at the highest achievement level, which is exceeds the standard. Again, we had 30% of students becoming promise eligible with 380 students meeting at least one indicator. And for me, the highest, the area that received, that should receive the highest celebration is our growth. When our students are achieving, we know that we're doing things right, we're meeting more student needs. And so this is, this was an exciting day today, not only because it was the first day of school, but it was also, it's also the groundwork for really great things to happen this school year in our classrooms. So we've talked a little bit about, oops, I forgot to add a slide when I shared this earlier. So we've talked a little bit about what our data looks like. Actually, you're missing a lot of slides. Let me see if I can, there's, I haven't updated one, I must not have sent the correct file. Apologize.
This is really good information, so I want to make sure you can...
This is really good information, so I want to make sure you can get to see it. So while Chris is pulling that up, one of the things that we've always talked about is how it's difficult to make real comparisons about our assessment results when we're looking at, what does that really mean beyond West Virginia? And so for the West Virginia General Summative Assessment, which is the three through eight assessment, that is a West Virginia-designed assessment. And so we can't truly compare the results with other, with anybody outside of West Virginia. However, we do have information that we can make comparisons from. And that's looking at information in our I-ready, I-ready benchmark data. We can also look at our AP results, which I was happy to share with you all last month, and again, in our SAT School Day performance. So looking at the I-ready data for English Language Arts, what you're seeing here is a comparison of how our students performed in the fall and how they performed in the spring. So I'm going to show you several slides that have comparison data that's looking at chronological information, and then we'll look at some information that is comparative across larger groups. So for reading, our students made tremendous gains from the fall to the spring last school year. The varying colors here represent where students fell as far as being mid or above their actual grade level, on grade level, one grade level below, two grade levels below, and potentially more grade, grade levels below that. So this was fall to spring. The next slide looks at spring to spring. So this is 2021 to 2022. And we can see here for reading that there is a slight increase, excuse me, at our students at the highest performance level, again, which is the mid or above grade level area. The shade below that is the early on grade level and there's a slight increase there. But the thing that we're most excited about with this data is looking at the lowest percentages. So we see from 2021, 2022 to 2022, 2023, we had a significant decrease in the students at the two lowest performance areas, which means not just that our students are making small shifts up one performance level, they made great leaps last school year, which is very, very exciting for us. Looking at our scores compared to national norms, which were set in 2018, 2019, Montegalia County students are slightly above the national norms. So again, this information from this data shows about 59% of students at the two highest performance levels. On our general summative assessment, we were at 55% proficient, so relatively, there's a pretty strong correlation here between the two results. So this is our national comparison for reading, for reading. Looking at our math data, this is again, fall to spring from this past school year. So we made some great gains again in our math performance from the early fall to mid to late spring. Looking at spring to spring, again, we see some growth in both the performance of students at the highest level and again, a celebration for our students moving out of those two lowest performance areas. And then looking at the national norms here, we're relatively on track with the national norms set in 2018, 2019. So again, the other piece of our assessment data that we can look at in comparison to our colleagues across the country, we talked about our benchmark scores for the college readiness benchmarks for SAT School Day already. And then I'm just going to call us back to some data from the AP results, which reflects that Mon County students who participated in AP tests had a 78% passing rate, where the global average was 61%. And 40, 40% of Mon County's test takers have been named AP Scholars this year, which is another pretty strong celebration for the students who participated. So the last thing I wanted to share is, this is, these are the dates for this, this spring's assessments or this, this school year's assessment series. So we will begin testing in October with the PSAT. Mon County will be assessing all students in grades nine through 11 on the PSAT, something that is very new this year and exciting for the community and for test takers across this, the country, is that College Board Assessments, with the exception of AP, are now fully online. So this will be the first computer-based assessment that our high school students have taken since they were in the eighth grade. So very important that we get all of our students in nine through 11 to participate, especially for those 11th graders, so that they're fully prepared for the spring assessment. We will test our students on the ALPA-21 Assessment, who are English Language Learners. We have several schools who will participate in the NAEP Assessment this spring as well. But the thing that I wanted to point out here that really is different for this school year with regard to testing is that there are going to be, there's a pilot, excuse me, and a field test of the writing assessment this spring. And because of that, our students will take writing before they take the summative assessment. So it may appear like testing is going on a little bit longer in the calendar, only because our students will take the writing assessment first and then, and in the spring, they'll just take the reading and the math and science if they're in a science-tested grade level. So the number of days that they are testing is still the same, but it will be spread out a little bit different. So exciting for families is that coming soon, families will be receiving their student score reports. In addition to the student score reports, they will also be receiving the Lexile Quantile Reports, which will provide some more detailed information about their individual student performance and what those Lexiles and Quantiles mean as far as pursuing additional academic and career opportunities for themselves. There will also be a link to a video score report, which is personalized for each student. That was something created by this West Virginia Department of Education. And new this year is our families will also receive a link to a family portal, which will include data for this most recent assessment year and then all data beyond that point. So any date, future assessment results taken with the general summative, a family will be able to log into this, at this portal and see their child's assessment history from this year forward. So thank you for the pause while I got my slides readjusted.
Well, the parents have a, what I would call it, a tutorial on how to navigate through this instead of, you know, some of them may look at this and say, I don't know what I'm looking at. So there'll be something as they click along?
Yes. So there are several guidance documents the state has created. We'll have those uploaded to, uploaded to our website and shared with all of the schools as well, so that they can provide that information to anybody who needs it. Anybody who's not able to access that electronically, we can certainly print those and provide them to families as well. So there are individual one-sheet guidance documents. There's also a PowerPoint, I believe, that the state created that goes section by section of the score report to really outline how you use everything.
I think it's very important because some of these parents graduated 10 or 12 years ago and a whole lot has changed in the last 10 or 12 years. So it's kind of like, I've always felt we need to bring the parents along with the students as, as we educate them how to navigate all of this.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
So having gone to the attendance and listened to the attendance speaker, have we correlated for our schools, and I'm sure a lot of schools would say they already know why the students are in the red areas, and some of that could be correlated with attendance? Because what the speaker said, if you miss 10, 10 days a year, it sets you behind, period. So I just wondered how the schools are planning on using this data, and I don't know if you're going to have the answer or if Deputy Superintendent's going to have the answer or...
I think that's all a piece of the puzzle. And as we talk about growth, of course, we're talking about academic and personal growth of our students. And so there has to be some point where those do overlap. I know the schools, the principals at our schools really put a lot of emphasis on how do we make progress at their openings with their staff? And so we do know that our schools have been digging into this information. Once we get the assessment results loaded into Panorama also, there'll be another way to pool and really look at data in a deeper way. But that would certainly be an interesting analysis to look at, at the attendance and performance comparison.
Well, so we can say, I mean, I do think you can look at some of that and see the emphasis that's gone to mathematics, which has kind of mirrored what we did with reading for years, that we're kind of, have made strides in that area. But now, just as you said, this is the jumping off point for us to continue.
Absolutely.
Because we have staff that's focusing still on the students that are struggling and the families that are struggling. So I keep thinking, we're going to make hay while the sun shines, so we're...
And for me, I just want to add to that. It really does look at, you know, coming through COVID and the pandemic. And nationally, there were deficits. We didn't see the same level of deficits, but there were. And what this data shows is, is back in school face-to-face for this year, really with good education occurring with our teachers, we've made significant progress. And so I just think we're going to see that continue again. It's all about good teaching and those students being in their seats for time with their teachers. I am, I am ready to close the Chromebooks for a little while.
So when did the schools actually get this information? Did they get it last week?
So the schools received their individual student results at the end of the school year. They, actually, the scores populate in the assessment system almost a day after a student completes the assessment now. And so it's very fast turnaround for schools to be able to look at how their students have performed. But this data, because this only takes into account that 135 days of enrollment, it does take some time for the state to verify and get that sorted out. Then it has to go to the state board for approval prior to the release to the schools. So they also received this the same day that it went public.
Well, I mean, it used to be you didn't get the results to October, then you were trying to plan for the school year and you kind of didn't know exactly where you were. So the schools have had enough time in some manner to at least make their academic plans for the year based on, somewhat on some of these scores.
Yes, yes. And that began, that began at the end of last school year. So they are, they're in their data, they're deep in the data, and they're looking at those individual students and start, already starting to make plans for how to help them improve. It's going to be an exciting year. It was a great day today, it's going to be a great year.
Nancy, to your point, you wrote up about our math progress. Our 11th grade scores in math...
Oh, yes, our 11th grade math scores were number one in the state. I forgot to share that. So that is very exciting. We know that our students work hard, they, our teachers work hard, and high school assessment results are, and it can be attributed to the whole school system. So that is always a nice recognition of the hard work across the whole system.
Well, and as we all know, sometimes high school test assessment results, the students are not as engaged in completing the testing to their best abilities at some times. Because they, a lot of them have always said, oh, I don't even know why I'm doing this. I don't see the value of this, you know, all of that. But it was good to see those numbers where they were.
Very exciting. So I'm sure I'll be back soon to talk about accountability data, but until then, that, thank you again for the time to talk about our student successes from last school year.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Superintendent reports discussions in the following.
Thank you, Courtney. We're going to switch gears a little bit here. Next up on our slate, we're going to get an update from our DLR architects on the progress with the Renaissance Academy. And our friend John Chadwick has made the trip today from Washington DC through all his trials and tribulations to get here. He's here, so John has a short presentation and then he'll open things up for questions from the board. So thanks for making the trek here, John.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Good evening, Chair Eitel, members of the board, Dr. Campbell and team. It's always exciting to be in Morgantown talking about Renaissance Academy, so thank you. I'm looking forward to these regular monthly meetings. Do I do this or you...
All right.
Yeah, next one, please. If you go up back to that, that's it. So let me update you on where we are and give you some thoughts on where we are so far. There's a lot of groundwork has to be done to make sure that we understand the site and we understand the implications of it, and we understand the cost implications that will really affect the building, particularly with foundations, soil conditions, environmental. So you can see here that we are, have completed phase one of our environmental stage assessment. The next one will be completed shortly. Topographic survey is underway. The boundary survey is pretty much complete. Sub-surface cord sampling or geotechnical sampling to figure out what's below ground, how well the fill that was being put on that mine has compacted and where the rock is and what type of rock it is underneath, where the water tables are and so on. That is proceeding. We're going to have some preliminary results of that at the end of next week. We've done visioning workshops. We've had a very successful stakeholder meeting, and we'll have another one this week. I have to say that your Dr. Campbell and all of you and Teresa Ness and other members of Dr. Campbell's team did an amazing job of collecting stakeholders for this project. Our DLR group, I don't think, has ever had a stakeholder kickoff meeting with the depth and range of people that we had. It was in a great location at the university. I know some of you were there. You know, it was great that we had the president of the university supporting it, the president of the community college. It was a really tremendous event, and I really do have to commend you on who you assembled and the enthusiasm that was in the room for Renaissance Academy and what it will do for your students and what it will do for your region. We have a preliminary program draft, which we'll be looking at with staff tomorrow, and we're beginning to put together site concept options. I will remind you that we aren't just looking at the one building, we are looking at this as a campus. And so we will be looking at the possibility of placing other buildings on that site, future additions to Renaissance Academy, because I would say that every one of these that we've done around the country has had an addition put on within five years because it's become so successful and there's demand for more students to attend and more programs. So we will be looking at it as an overall campus plan, not just the one building, and hoping to spread those site development costs across more than one particular project. Next slide, please. The workshops were very interesting following the, following the stakeholder meeting. The workshops were very interesting following the, following the stakeholder meeting. We did a SWOT analysis on career technical education and what the opportunities, what strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges were in the, in the region. We did an exercise around learning connections in terms of what the type of learning that we expect to happen in Renaissance Academy. And I have to say that even that also, your staff is to commend it, because we're looking at the most advanced type of learning and organization in that academy. You're leading us. We often lead and introduce our clients to these things. In this case, you're leading us, and we're proud of that. And we did a day in the life. In other words, what would the experience of the student be through the course of a day at Renaissance Academy, and what they experienced? Where would they be? How would they work? How would they collaborate with one another? How would they, how would faculty facilitate the learning, project-based learning? We did a values workshop around sustainability and the opportunities for the site. You've set very high standards there of zero energy, low carbon, and there was enthusiasm for that. We're very excited about, about that, too. And we know that we have to start out with those goals in mind at the very beginning in order to achieve them on a reasonable budget. And then we did a short design charrette, which was probably the most animated part of the day. I've never seen someone put a miniature palm tree inside a plastic bag before, but that was, that was very cool. Next slide, please. So from that, we, our team did a brainstorming session. And we like to do this at the beginning of the project to, what did we learn? What did we really hear from all of you, and from your, all the people assembled from within MCS and outside? And what are those guiding principles for this? So this is a draft. We've reviewed it with Dr. Campbell and his team. The definitions are going to be tweaked over time, as they always are. But there were four big messages we felt came out. The first one was agility, and the definition, I'll read it to you, "The collective institutional and personal capacity to identify, react, respond, and embrace ever-changing conditions." Renaissance Academy will constantly change through its life in terms of the programs and the needs of the students and the needs of the region. Agency is providing all students the opportunity to explore, experience, choose, and follow their own passions, honoring different styles, interests, and choices. So it's going to be about individual students, and then how they collaborate with one another. Transformation, a catalyst for changing our expectations of education, community, and personal development, building new relationships between students, educators, and industry. Placing it in the region, transforming learning throughout Monmouth County schools. And restoration, minding, mending, and renewing the community economy, the natural environment, that is a strip mine site, as you know, and the educational mission, and strengthening the whole person, physical, cognitive, and emotional. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, we put a palm tree in a plastic bag. We had four different groups who did design charrettes for about an hour and a half or two hours, or one, what their thoughts were about how we put this together. We gave them a little kit of parts in a box so that they had something to start from. They weren't drawing from scratch. And I must say, they were very creative, and they were very animated while they were doing it, and they had fun. So they came up with four different schemes, and down below, you'll see our drawings which are interpreting their drawings. And they didn't really give them names, but we give them names so we can distinguish between them. On the left is courtyard, campus quad, so built around, buildings built around an exterior space. The second one is interior street, so that's all of the program spaces focusing on a street that runs through the middle, like a commons space. A central commons, which is more of a central space for people to gather in, and then hearts and wings, which I have to look into more because I don't quite understand that one. I think that was the one that had the palm tree. Next slide, please. So I know that you're familiar with the nationally recognized career clusters. There are 16 of them. And your current programs fall within them at MTEC and the high schools. Go to the next slide. We've done an analysis of what you have already and where you have it. So which of these career clusters are you already serving, and where are the programs that relate to them? Between MTEC, University High School, Clay Patel, and Morgantown High School, where are they? And as we proceed through the education plan, we need to understand what that relationship is going to be in the future, as to what's done at Renaissance Academy, and what's done in the high schools, and how do they relate to one another? Next slide, please. This is the other half of this. You've got a pretty robust set of programs already, and they will be expanded and transformed in Renaissance Academy. So the, if you go to the next slide, thank you. The primary career clusters that have been proposed at this point are agricultural food, agriculture, food, and natural resources, architecture and construction, health sciences, hospitality and tourism, IT and STEM, and then transportation, distribution, and logistics, and we are considering aviation. So we are expanding on those. We will be, we have a stakeholder meeting on Thursday morning, and we'll be talking about those further, and soliciting specific interests and needs that are seen among them from the members of the stakeholder group. On the right, you can see examples of the dynamic spaces that are created for this type of program. So next steps, if you can go to the last slide, I think it's the last slide. The site investigation is continuing. It'll be completely wrapped up around the end of September with the reports and analysis. Stakeholder engagement is continuing. That will include student engagement. We're working with staff to schedule charrettes or design sessions with middle school students and high school students so that we get their feedback and input. We always learn an awful lot of things from that, and often things that we hadn't expected. We are working with Amanda to do a series of programming and focus groups to get into the depth of what the specific spaces are now, and what the needs will be in the future, and how they will be managed and operated. We're working through ONUS Project's requirements, which are actually your requirements, school board's requirements for the project, and an educational master plan. We're beginning to develop concept options. It's a little hard to do very much until we have a minimum amount of information on the site. The topo and the boundary is really important. We'll go through concept options, and with you, we will select a final one. We will be then putting, as we do that, we will be looking at the costs of each one, and then we will be putting together a final cost on which the bond vote will be built. The SBA submission process starts in the end of November. That is proceeding on track. And as you all well know, the bond referendum is on May the 14th of 2024. And certainly, our team, and I think your team view, any communication we have, board meetings, any meetings we have, are to get people enthusiastic about this project, to bring out the vote. I think that's the last slide. Yes, just some pretty pictures of CTE spaces and college prep spaces. Thank you. Questions?
Gordon Nurse?
The one thing I would like to start to see is a little bit of stuff we can have in our hands, so when we have meetings with different people that could influence the financing of this, it'd be nice to be able to give that to them. And I'm trying to figure out what a schedule for that would be as far as, I had a meeting with a couple US representatives the other day, and this would have been a perfect opportunity to ask them for $75 million, and I didn't have any. So is there, when do we start to see something like that that would be presentable? And this is a question of the staff also, as far as, so we can start getting these people involved. They're enthusiastic. Every single person I talk to wants to be involved with this thing, and they want them all over the state. I had one person ask me if we was doing a residential part of this, so they could move some people from around the state to come here to be educated with our kids. So there's, you know, there's a lot more out, and there's a lot out there, but in order to buy, maybe to start looking at some different options and starting to talk to these people, so we have a lot of this stuff in mind. Where are we at on a schedule for that, or what's your thoughts, or what's the thinking in the group?
So I will say that by the next school board briefing in a month's time, we will have some concepts, design options to show you. But I think that the trifold that we had done, the printed trifold that we'd done before, was pretty useful. I think we can update that right away to reflect where we are now. And that will be something that you can give people.
It'd be good, it'd be good to get that part of it rolling.
I think we can do that, and that will be really useful.
So it'd be good to get that rolling.
I would agree, John. I've used those, I've used every one you gave me. So every meeting I go to, I take those and, and I give them out. So if you could update those...
I think we could update it, and it would be, it would be really good. So we'll do that.
We'll take as many as you can give us, because I know these folks...
We'll give you, we'll give you the file, and then you can print as many as you like.
Personally, perfect.
So one thing that we need with that is an actual definition of what this concept is in education, because it's called different things, different places. Because I think anyone that, probably any of us have talked to, we all have a different way of explaining it. And I almost feel like we need a definition, even if it's got bullet points or something. And it's because any of the folks that I think any of us have talked to about funding, at first, they don't really understand what it is, what's different about this than the traditional technical education centers or other successful tech ed places in the state or in this region. What makes this so special? Why, how are we going to integrate this with our high, with our high school curriculum? Then, of course, the next question is, what's going to happen with the MTEC building? So I really think we need something that better defines what this really can mean. Because I still think in a lot of people's minds, if you say technical education, they have the concept of what it was when they were in school in their head for right of reasons. And they don't get to see Pam jumping all around and explaining everything. So it, it, it sounds, I think, to some of those folks, just the same old, same old, and it really isn't.
So, so let us really put that together. I certainly, we will work with Theresa Nass to come up with talking points. We'll work with staff to come up with a clear definition. And why don't we get that, go into that update of that trifold? And then you're all on the same message.
Because I think that's been part of the problem was, I know, when I was able to stop by when you started this with the stakeholders, several of the members of your team said, oh, you have the trifold. I'm like, kind of a not really. That's not really what people want to know, especially on these national levels. They don't really, a lot of them don't have a background in education. They don't really understand what is different about this, and why it, it should be something that federal dollars, even if it's non-reclamation money, why would it be this that they would support over maybe a different kind of educational program? So that's, that's part of my thing. Your trifold's very nice, and it looks like what we might have, and I think it somewhat explains it. But I think for a person that this is new and fresh in their head, they still don't understand what the difference is. They just think it's a big school up on a nice piece of undermined property that everybody from the high schools is going to go to. I don't think they understand how transformational it can be, which is part of why I think the staff is so excited about, because, and superintendent, because you see it as a transformation of the high school educational experience. And sometimes I feel like when I say that to people, they look at me like, you know, I've got 15 eyes coming out of my head, because it doesn't make any sense. So that would be one of my biggest requests, more so than these pictures or what the building's going to look like. I, I think the programming is what's going to make the difference.
You said something, Nancy, that always struck dear to me, is the old vocational school. They always had the attitude of, oh, they can't really make it in the, that's the type of education, so we'll send them to the vocational school. And we don't have that problem here. That myth does not exist in this board. It's equal all the way up through. And I want to make sure that we continue that, that it's, it's the same level. And of course, it hasn't been that way.
I remember when we were standing here and you were interviewing us, or we were presenting to you, the question came up, you know, what is the biggest challenge? And Pam jumped up and down and said, it's getting people to understand it's not your grandfather's photo. And, and that really is a big issue that we've got to deal with. So let's put our heads together and figure out how we address that head on.
I think MTEC has done a fabulous job of rising to that level. Because we always look, if we need something to purchase, I always say, can the students make it at MTEC? Let's have them do it. And MTEC's got a very strong history, I guess it is. They don't have that stigma of, okay, the only kind, only kids who went there are the ones who couldn't make it anywhere else.
They still do within the student. I mean, we see it very differently, but I know when my, my daughter just graduated a few years ago, and that stigma is still there with the students.
Oh, yeah, yeah. What I'm saying is, at our level, we, we don't ever want to look down at it. We want to be level with it. And, you know, a lot of them think, well, that's not, you know, it's, you go there because you can't make it. Sign up for the electrical part of it. And you'll see where you're, you'll realize, we, I really don't know a lot about this. There's a lot of programs out there that's...
It's not relevant to, a lot of students don't think it's relevant to their plans for the future. And it's not that the school doesn't have great opportunities, they just still can't envelop it into their future, especially if they think they're going to go on, you know, and get a master's degree in XYZ or whatever it is. They, they have a hard time correlating all that. And I, and sometimes the parents have a hard time correlating. And then the other issue is, they don't want to get on the bus that goes there. So, I mean, it's a whole, if, if half of our high school student population is going here every other day, and they're all on the same bus, I think it's really going to change that, be part of what changes that mindset. And of course, we'll have to have a zillion parking places, because they're all going to drive their own cars anyway, but...
That's okay. We've got the space out there.
But it's just a, it's just a different concept that can be relevant to almost any career choice. And maybe it's the size of MTEC right now makes people feel like it, it can't meet their needs for their ultimate career goals. So...
It's kind of interesting. That's the only school that we have to recruit for, has nothing to do with where you live, so to speak. And that comes into the counselors, and fitting it into the student's schedule. So those are all the obstacles we need to eliminate on this, on this next level. Because we're, we're here, but this is way up there.
Yes.
My daughter said it best. She went to very, very good engineering college, and she said, there was, it was coding, and there was a couple different things that she didn't know how to do when she got there. And it was one of those things that was, and I mean, she was an excellent student. This is, this is an opportunity, I see this as an opportunity for us to offer things to students that are high flyers, that can be taught by someone that is passionate about that, whether they're a university professor or one of our staff, one of our professionals that we have in our buildings, where we can offer something to all the students of Montague County, and, you know, I don't, it doesn't matter to me where the students come from, as long as, as long as we're serving, serving children in education. But to, to make those opportunities available and to define them, and not to, not to confine ourselves to, to, is this going to be a, you know, a certain type of, of, of education for a certain career path? Because it doesn't necessarily have to be career path specific. And if we start career path specific, specificing the, what we're doing here, that's, it's going to become, it's just going to become our grandfather's vocational education. That's not what we're doing. This is an opportunity for, for dreamers to teach kids, and let, and let that dream happen. Where's it at? And, and what's the future? What is the future of north, west, north central West Virginia? And we're going to define that through education at the K-12 level. So it's, it's, for us to try to pick career paths, I think we're almost going down the wrong way. wrong road. I think this has to be parts of different career paths, offered at different times and to all students here.
And there's been a lot of students go through M-Tech, they go on to college, do extremely well.
Absolutely.
We're already doing it, we just, we're taking it to the next level.
I, I hope that we'll find many high flyers we didn't know were high flyers through this process.
Correct. Give them something to be passionate about, they'll come to school ready to learn.
Absolutely.
So, any other questions about the update? I do have a question because we have, our next thing is a soil test proposal, Soil Testing Services proposal. And I read over the soil testing proposal and where we're at, almost seems like we should have anticipated this proposal as part of our, as part of our original contract. So I'm not going to question this one, but I'm going to ask, what do you see between now and when we're done with this process that could come up, that would be more money for the school board to spend outside the original contract that we have?
You're, you're quite right to bring that up. And we were quite clear that there would likely be some things that we couldn't anticipate, the amount, the scope of which we couldn't anticipate. That would be extras, we were clear about that. This is one of them. So they did preliminary testing and the preliminary testing suggested that they needed to do more. So we included that initial testing. There's more that needs to be done. And it's really to make sure that we understand the conditions, we know what to do about them, and that, and that we can work with your staff to figure out who's responsible for it.
I was very excited to see this one, actually, because I thought to myself, as we sit here and approved $171,000 change order at the last thing, because we didn't know what was in the dirt. I want you guys to make the effort to make sure that we're not sitting here when the bulldozer hits the site. We want to know what we have to do to make that site ready for the buildings, not to be surprised after everything, bid day is the cheapest day.
That's very much our intent. We will, though, for every project, as we work through the budget, we will be advising you on contingencies so that you have some of those things covered. Because there will be some things we find, there always are, as you know, but we cover them in a contingency and that contingency is reduced by the amount of due diligence that we do.
And that's appreciated.
It's a question of balancing risk. But I wouldn't want to say here, oh, we're going to do everything so you don't have any of those, because there are underground conditions. We're going to do the absolute best we can, but there may be more later.
Okay. Superintendent, then we can move on to, to B, while he's still available. Yes. So, John, did you want to talk anymore to the board about the Soil Testing Services proposal?
No, it's exactly what I just explained. They did the, the first work that we'd included and there's more that we're recommending we do now. And as you know, we're talking about how we understand who is responsible for that.
Board members, do you have any questions for John about this?
In a reclaimed mine site, you're going to have surprises, I'm sure.
Unfortunately, yes.
Their goal with reclaiming is push the trees into the hole, fill them over, plant grass.
Yep.
With no intentions of building anything on it. And then we come along, decide to build something on it.
And I can only share with you some of the things we found on sites that we thought were perfectly clean. People did bad things in the past sometimes.
Board members, the administrative staff has had a chance to look at the proposal. We've shared that with you and your executive content. The superintendent's ready to make a recommendation to approve the Soil Testing Services proposal as presented this evening.
Need a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions from the board members? I'm hearing none. All in favor of DLR Soil Testing Services proposal as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
I think John's going to stay with us. We have a meeting tomorrow, I think, so he's going to stay.
Have a safe trip home tomorrow.
You say what? You said yes.
We've got our weekly meeting tomorrow, so he's going to be here in person, so.
Okay.
All right.
Maintenance update.
And Amanda is going to provide the board with a maintenance update to cover things we've been working on, the projects we've got going on, and answer any questions the board might have related to that. Things look pretty good after I've had a chance to talk to her, so Amanda?
Yes. So, summer has vastly passed us by. So I'll start with the Excel Center. City construction has started pouring the foundations and started the ICF walls on the classrooms and the activity space. The, the buses were able to use the new bus loop and first day of school, everything went well. We are, the construction is in between the middle school and the high school, so we have rerouted some entry exiting. We've tried to put up some temporary signage so that parents know where to come into the site, separate from the buses and that type of thing. We are putting up, I'm working with Tony over at Transportation, and we're going to put up some more temporary signage this week, if not tomorrow, the following day, just to keep parents aware of, of where students, they, students need to be dropped off at versus the buses and that type of thing. So everything is, is moving along there pretty well at Excel. Over at Morgantown High School, we have, the scoreboards have been installed and working condition on the football field as well as the gym. They received a new gym floor this summer. It is finished. The paint, we're having a little bit of issues with the, specifically the red color of paint. It's not quite as bold and as crisp as the previous floor. So working with the vendor to get them to come back out and make sure that the school is satisfied with the colors for the main logo and the game lines. The gym floor is usable and they're going to use it and everything, but the contractor's going to come back and do some touch-up with the paint to make sure that everyone, you know, is satisfied with that. The Brookhaven roof, it is complete other than, there's a little bit of metal coping that was missing. And so I talked with Ramp Construction and they're going to go ahead and schedule the final inspection with the manufacturer so that we can get our warranty and sort of close out everything while we're waiting on the final metal. As of right now, we don't have a date when that's going to be in, but they're, they're checking into that. A couple of projects that are in design, the Suncrest Center, the demolition, we're getting a drawing and specifications ready to get that out to bid, to get a demolition contractor. And we will be bidding out the North Stair Tower project. That's our SBA partial funding project. We'll be bidding that out soon as well. At Suncrest Middle School, we are having some structural issues with a small area of the original part of the building, which was built in 1939, specifically the library. There's some structural concerns with a wall. And so we are taking extreme caution. We have closed the library as well as the basement underneath. I think it's two classrooms and some offices. The classrooms and offices have been relocated to other parts of the building. And we, we just want to make sure everything, students and staff are safe until we're working with a structural engineer to get us a good game plan for repairs. And we'll be getting a, hiring a contractor, you know, to do that. We're going to do our best to get it done as, as quickly as possible, definitely before the end of the year. We don't know exactly how long it's going to take. We hope to get some proposals, you know, times and that type of thing soon. And then in terms of maintenance, we have had some HVA issues throughout the summer, specifically AC supply chain in terms of getting parts in. They're ordered, they get delayed, they send us another shipment date, get delayed as well. But as of today, all the, the parts for the AC units have been, have arrived, been installed, and the schools have functioning AC. And that's all that I have right now.
Board members, any questions?
Yes.
Could you just explain so that the public is aware of the investigation that was done at Suncrest Middle and how it was determined which part of the school people could not be in?
Sure, sure. So originally, we asked a structural engineer to come out and assess basically the original part of the building. And as he, as he did that, he walked aside, interior and exterior. The, mainly the only concern was the library section. And so at that point, we asked two separate engineers to come in. I like to have multiple recommendations and I also like to have multiple eyes on it to really see and make sure that we're looking at everything, interior, above the ceiling, from foundations to the roof. We can't be too, too safe when it comes to structural issues, especially with, with the building being this, this old. And so that's sort of how we got three recommendations. And then at this time, that's when we decided, you know, it needs to be closed. The whole building doesn't need to be closed because it's at a, the library is what the issue is, where the issue is. And then we took recommendations from them on what areas needed to be closed under, below. And we're, we fenced off an area on the exterior just to keep people from walking around the library when they're outside.
Thank you.
So where, where is the library going to be now? Where, did they move that? Is there space within the building to move?
You know, in terms of the library, it is fine for the staff to go in and, and say, get a couple of books out, to go in those, those classes and then come, come out, type of thing. We just don't want staff or students to be in their offices all day or be in the library all day. They do have a storage section underneath and, and we're allowing them to go in to get things that they need and maybe take it to a classroom or something like that. Those type of things are, are safe. We just don't want them to be in there for, you know, long periods of time. And, and we just want to be extra cautious. Safety is number one for us.
Thank you. I didn't really like that answer, because if it's not safe, it's not safe. Can you talk a little bit about the history of how we found this and, and how we got to this point?
Originally, the vice principal contacted me. She, she saw some exterior, the bricks sort of cracks in it. And throughout the years, they had, the cracks have been sort of filled in on the exterior of the brick. And sort of, that sort of prompted, I went out there and, and I looked at it and I, I just wanted to get a structural engineer to come out and, and really do a thorough review of it because that's, that's above me. And sort of, that, that prompted it. And we did have someone come in and, and look at pretty much the entire building, mostly concerned with the oldest part of it.
Okay. Let's talk a little bit about winter coming on in heating systems.
Okay.
What are, what's your concerns at this point? Are there any?
You know, we recently had a meeting with Newman, our HVAC contractor, and we discussed some HVAC issues that we had during the summer and how that we need to try to get things repaired a little bit quickly. And whenever some things that we need to get a handle on better, that type of thing, getting, when, when we know that a school doesn't have heat or AC, what can we do to, to get it repaired more quickly? Do things need to be ordered? You know, what needs to be done? Do we need to order from, find multiple pricing before something is ordered? And so, I mean, we, we feel confident that we can, we're on a better track to start off the, the school year.
I'd like to think we need to try to figure out how to get that library out of there and our staff out of there.
Right. I was going to agree with you, Ron.
If it's, if it's an issue.
I don't want anybody in there at any time.
I'm sorry, can you say that?
The, the, my, my mind keeps going back to somebody running in and grabbing a book out of the library and, and something happening.
Okay.
And, I mean, we just, I mean, we just said it's a dangerous situation. There shouldn't be anyone in there.
Right.
And then we said we was going to send someone in there. That's, that doesn't, that doesn't check here. So let's be careful.
No, and I don't, I don't know that it's been declared that it's a dangerous situation. This is precaution, as recommended by the structural architects. And, and we can make, we can make adjustments to that. The, we have, we've worked directly with Mrs. Hicks. When she, when we made the decision that we closed those sections off, we worked directly with her so that she could rearrange, whether it be her schedule or locations for people, office changes, all of the above. So we're not going to be running people in and out. I think the suggestion was that if there was something that somebody needed in order to work in the off-site location that they had, that they would, they would be able to go and get it. We're not going to be able to move that library to another spot in the building. The library is a, is a pretty large.
Right.
Area. And to, to try to relocate that is not feasible. And so I think the, the idea is that nobody has access to the library unless in the event that, you know, they have to go in there and get something that they need to, to do a class or something like that. There's no danger that something's going to happen. That's precautionary at this point. You know, the, the structural architect, or structural engineers, when we spoke to all three of them about it, you know, they made it clear that, that you need to take some precautions until we can get it secured up and repaired to the level that it needs to be prepared. But there was no concerns on their part that the wall was going to fall down anytime in the near future. And that wasn't, that's not the issue. The issue is just getting it repaired to correct the issue as it is. So we're not going to let people go in and out of there on a daily basis. It's just that we're not also going to move the library. It's not going to be possible to do that. So there, there may be times when something would have to be retrieved and they've told us that that's okay to do.
There's no imminent danger.
There is no imminent danger at all.
Because realistically, if there were, that whole half of the school would be in, in, you know, more than half that structure would be considered dangerous and we wouldn't be having anyone anywhere near that.
Absolutely.
We'd have to, would have had to make wholesale other arrangements. So, and I'm thinking to myself, a library is an important part of the school, but as more items have gone online and we've had more access to digital books and digital magazines and everything else that they use in there, I know the, most of the schools, I think that we've seen, the library has been used in a different way. Not necessarily as, again, when I was in school or, or others when they didn't have the availability of digital media. So, I mean, I don't know.
That's absolutely fancy. And again, thankfully, I guess, we didn't have any actual student classrooms affected. That basement area is where we did have small groups. We've relocated those over to the sixth grade building, which is very spacious, actually. So what we had in the basement were our intervention groups. Our outreach facilitator had an office there. So we did occasionally have some students come down there. Our clothing closet for outreach is located there. Mrs. Hicks and I worked through all of this in a quick manner when we got all the reports. She's relocated. She's relocated all of those individuals. The, the library, just like you said, Nancy, is, is not the traditional, go check out a book, although that certainly has, you know, is, is something that we do. But we do have so many opportunities online for the books at this point that it'll be an inconvenience, and the hope is that this is all done by December, all of the, all of the root cares.
In our discussions with the structural engineers, they think that having this completed by December is something that's doable.
All right. Any other questions? Amanda? Okay. Superintendent, move on to accounts.
Thank you, Amanda. All right. We are down to the accounts payable addendum, first of two. This is addendum A, and President Lidle will recuse himself from the vote.
I have a question. They both look like they're the exact same. They both have both of their names on it. Does that matter? Should they both?
No, they need to split, so, you know, we, they're, they're for reimbursement for travel.
Right. They just both said both things.
Yeah, yeah. So superintendent recommends that the board approve accounts payable addendum A.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries?
For accounts payable addendum B, member Walker will recuse herself. And we'll bring Mr. Lidle back in. President Lidle. All right. Superintendent recommends that the board approve accounts payable addendum B as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of accounts payable addendum B, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Superintendent, awarding contracts.
All right. So we want to grab Mrs. Walker.
Oh. I almost smacked you out there.
That was an easy one now. Always pretty quiet.
Okay. All right. We do have a couple of contracts we need to award this evening. The first one is for a paving project at Brookhaven Elementary School. We have presented you with the bidding information. We received three bids, and the low bid came in at $138,000 even. And superintendent recommends that the board approve the contract for the paving at Brookhaven for parata construction, parata paving, I'm sorry.
Yeah, any motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Hey, we have three bids. Was there, how do we put these out?
It was advertised, and it was advertised, and we also had a free bid.
Okay, good deal. All right. Any other questions? All right. All in favor of Brookhaven Elementary paving being awarded to Parata Paving, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Superintendent?
All right. Item B is a paving project as well. This is at Eastwood Elementary. I've shared with you the bidding information there as well. We had three bidders on that project, and superintendent recommends that the board approve the low bid, which is $37,700, and that would be to Anderson Excavating LLC.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of Eastwood Elementary paving being awarded to Anderson Excavating LLC, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Superintendent consent agenda?
All right. We are down to our consent agenda. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented to include items A, expenditures exceeding $3,000, item B, the supplements and transfers, C, the payment of salaries and accounts payable, item D, Concall Consulting Agreement, item E, the Mylan Park Baseball and Softball Agreement, item F is the BSN Agreement with Morgantown High School, item G is the Burlington UMFS Addendum, item H is the West Virginia Military Authority Future Leaders Program, item I is the Kitomatics MOU, item J is the Source MOU, item K is the Visiting Homemakers MOU, item L is the Shack Neighborhood House MOU, item M are our field experience, and item N are the minutes.
Need a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Board member updates? Anybody?
Just a quick thing on the, the MPO. I think I spoke about the possibility of a new bridge south of Morgantown. That was one of the things that came before we were on board, and we approved alternative three, which will bring it from the industrial park up to Crafton Road, somewhere around the postal plaza. That is to be determined yet, but, so it, it'll be on its fast track because they want to get that done for the, so we can have more economic growth over in that area, so.
Mike, does that come in by Scott Avenue?
It's not really been determined yet, but it'll be between the Gluckfeldy and Scott Avenue.
Okay.
As of right now, again, that, once again, everything put together, it may be somewhere else, or, you know, somewhere within that avenue. But it's, I've always said, it's more of an economical issue than it is a transportation issue of economic development. That was a promise that was made to Mount New Bodleian. It's my understanding now that they're charging ahead full speed with the rest of their growth.
What's the end date of that? Can I ask that?
I don't have that.
Okay.
And I do want to stress that I'd asked the state people in a, in another meeting if they are in 100% support of the interchange. And the answer was yes. It's not, this is not in lieu of the interchange at Hartley Grove. It's along with it. It's just that this will be, hopefully get done quicker than jump through all the hoops for the, for the feds for the interchange part of it. And I think it'll be good if it's placed right. If, if the development goes in up behind Skyview and all that, all of those families can go up the hill a little ways and jump on it and be on 68 headed to Cheet Lake in, in no time, as opposed to going down through town or through Westover and going around the long way. But again, if you look at it and you think solely transportation, it's, it's, you know, people look at, so why don't we fix our other roads? But it's more, like I said, of economic development. So I do, it is my personal opinion about it, and I, I think it's a, it's a neat adventure to, to keep everything going over there.
Okay, superintendent, let's do some policies.
All right.
Can he talk about the first day of?
I was just going to suggest that, thank you, Mrs. Walker.
We could. I was going to say that I've seen some, some work, Ric Flair, teachers fired up.
Give you a, a real quick update on the first day of school. I had the chance to, to go out to spend the morning at.
Skyview.
Thank you for reminding me where I was. And they had a, they had a great opening. I, I couldn't say anything more about the way that that, that all went down this morning. But I was going to put our deputy superintendent on, on the spot. We had a meeting with our staff today. Donna does a great job sending out our central office administrators to all of the schools to observe the first day of school. And so they spend a good portion of their day at the school watching everything, and then they come back, and then in the afternoon, they give, they give a kind of an overview of what, what they saw, good and bad, so that we can see if there's things we need to tweak. And so I did get that update today, and it was very, very positive. But I didn't warn her ahead of time, but if I could put her on the spot and ask her to give us a, a quick update on how the first day went, good and bad.
Absolutely. And I'm thrilled to be able to do that. I'm thrilled to be able to say we've done our first day, and that's the hardest part, just getting ready to do it. I can tell you that the pancakes for breakfast were hit, Salisbury steak for lunch was also a huge hit. So everybody talked about that at the schools. And yes, all of our staff that are not already assigned to schools are out and about on the first day, and they're there. Sometimes it's helping children cut Salisbury steak, it's finding classrooms, it's, it's making children feel safe that are trying to open a locker for the sixth grade at a middle school. We have had a wonderful day on all accounts. Transportation has had a couple hiccups. We also had a hiccup with our switch, which I'm happy to say, though, is final. Our phone systems are now all centralized with Mitel, thanks to Chris Urban and her IT staff. But we did have a hiccup with South and their ability to receive calls at the end of the day. They were there, but they weren't getting the calls, and I know there was frustration with that. We did have, as we've had in the past, Morgantown High buses. If they get off to a late start at dismissal, the whole system backs down and backs up. So we did have a delay. We have a new pattern for dismissal at Morgantown High, and I'm sure that had something to do with it. But again, it's just going to take a couple of more times to work that out. But if they don't leave right on time, we all know how the traffic is in this town, and it affects every other school. I know that from personal experience by being at North when the buses didn't get there till 4:30, because they had been held up at Morgantown High. So our, our transportation plan is working. Again, there've been a few hiccups. I talked with Tony here at the end of the day. We do not have any misplaced students. Everyone is accounted for and home safely a little later than perhaps we would want. I, I had a teacher at Mount Near Middle who said to us, in 37 years, this is the first time that I ever knew how all my children were leaving on the bus, on a certain bus, because we have the same bus in the morning and the same bus in the afternoon. So I heard that several times from, reports from the day. The schools seemed very, very happy to be able to feel safe about that. The students were joyful. Our teachers were wonderful at every school site. I wish you could see it the way we do and through the eyes of the folks that were there. I can't tell you how much preparation our teachers have done. We did add the fourth day to the prep of the school year. I got very good reports on that in our calendar, that we had four days prep. Our, our staff did not feel quite as stressed as they might feel because they had a little additional prep time to get ready for today. So I think Sandy and I will certainly make sure that happens for the future. I can answer lots of other questions. I could tell you lots of other specific things that have gone on today. I really don't have, thankfully, other than a broken arm at a school on the first day in a playground accident, which we hated, obviously. But that and some late buses were actually our only snappos.
I just have two things. One, I was pleased to see that the two stops got added to Falling Water.
Yes.
That made that community happy. And also, how was it this morning at Mount Near Middle School with the Willie Street?
Perfect. There was not an issue there.
I guess it might have impacted Eastwood as well.
Now, Eastwood is always a traffic because everybody brings their child to school the first few days. So there was a, a backup into the roundabout. And our paving and our new dismissal with using Trainmore, I think when we get that done will also give us another exit. We only have the one in and out area through the roundabout. So that was, that was still there. Mount Near Middle, the students were in, delivered in 11 minutes. It was fabulous. No issues whatsoever with that, and I.
I'd be cautious of that because they've got, they've got it milled, but when they start fading.
And it will be, it will be. So we had a lucky star today.
They're going pretty good with that. They got it milled pretty quickly, and it's.
Yeah, they have.
Been a long bit.
And Tony Harris is, is friends with and stays in contact with the superintendent, the job superintendent there. They've been communicating about the times, and I'm going to congratulate them because they're being sensitive to our issues here as well.
So was middle school ridership up? Because I think that was one of the things we kept hearing, was that more middle school students were going to have to take the bus in the morning.
And I, I can't tell you for sure if the ridership was up. We haven't gotten that deeply into it. But yes, because of the time changes, I'm sure that some buses will be, students will be more inclined to ride buses. But we all know that there are a lot of car riders and a lot of folks who bring their children. Bob was at Ridgedale today, and he, he couldn't believe the number of cars and students being dropped off. But thankfully, we've got lots of room up there, and we had, again, I want to shout out to the sheriff's office. We had three deputies out there, because we all know that intersection is, is always concerning. But again, lots of support from the sheriff's office there today as we got underway.
Can you have Tony, or can you have Tony give us a report on ridership at the next meeting? Even if it's just a written report on?
Sure.
Because I'm just curious, because that's what we kept hearing, was the, you know, families who previously did three drop-offs or, or whatever, it was, just wasn't going to happen, so.
That should give us enough time to get a little bit of data as the, as things kind of settle in. So yeah, we could do that.
I will say, a little bird was, had told me that they were excited to see you at the Skyview this morning, and I think Sandy was with you.
I think that.
Sandy was at Westwood.
Yeah, Sandy went to Westwood. Teresa and I went to, to Skyview and hung out.
Oh yeah, you were at Westwood.
Yeah. It was fun. It was great to see the kids coming in, and they've got their new shoes and their new outfits and new hairdos, and they're all excited to be there.
The kids did not, you did not go unnoticed. Kids knew who you were.
And the guy in the suit.
Sandy, I had the privilege of spending a little bit of time with some teachers at Westwood before they went back to school, and they did mention how much they enjoy having you at the school, so keep going back because they like having you there.
She's assigned there. She's going to be there as a regular.
They like her there.
And they, they do.
They feel like you love them.
She does.
That's what I do.
I have one, but we'll do, I'll do it later, the, after the meeting, but, just for you. Anyhow, policies?
All right. We do have several policies this evening. We're going to start with policy 3132, which is vacancies. Jennifer, remind me which ones you want to do together?
I'll do A and B, and then C, D, E, and F.
Okay, so let's do A and B, which is policy 3132 vacancies professional positions, as well as policy 4132, which is vacancies for service positions. This is the first time you've seen these changes.
These new policies are a result of the passage of House Bill 4489, which was actually last summer, and basically stating that all of the positions, service, professional, extracurricular, all positions have to be posted on the state job bank, which now, because we have Frontline, everything is automatically posted to the state job bank. So we are in compliance with this, but this just reflects the new code language.
Yes, from both of them?
Yes. One's professional, one is service.
Very nice. Moving on.
You want to do C, D, and E?
C, D, E, and F.
F, C, D, E, and F. Okay, so we're going to do policy 3139.01, suspension. Policy 4139.01, also suspension. Policy 3213, student supervision and welfare by professional staff, and policy 4213, student supervision and welfare by service staff. supervision and welfare by service staff. All of these are for introduction, first time that you're seeing these.
These policies are, as you know, probably C and D are similar. They just reflect the service versus professional, and the same with E and F. These are all a result, the changes are a result of House Bill 4562, again, last year, and it's, it updates the suspension requirements and the duties of the superintendent and the school board in cases where there's an allegation that the health, safety, welfare, or learning environment of students is jeopardized, and also in a case where a staff member is charged with committing a felony or a misdemeanor with irrational nexus to performing their duties or child abuse, what the board is required to do then, and basically that these people in these situations are not to have any direct contact with students.
Any questions, comments, board members? Bring that one back. We had to move on to G.
Okay. We will do that. We'll get all those that you've seen this evening for the first chance. We'll get those ready for first reading for our next board meeting. We are down to policy 2430.02, participation in extracurricular activities. This is for first reading. Superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 2430.02 for first reading.
Need a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
We've had this in the past. Any questions or comments, board members? Okay. All in favor of policy 2430.02, participation in extracurricular activity going for first reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same?
All right. Board members, I'm going to pull policy 2520, selection of instructional materials and equipment off of our agenda this evening. We have since received an updated version of this policy, so I need to give Jennifer and our administrative team an opportunity to look at the new updates for this, and then we'll bring that back to you at a future meeting. So, we will not do 2520 this evening. So, let's move to policy 2600, educational program. This is also for first reading. Superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 2600 as presented to you this evening.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, board members? Hearing none. All in favor of policy 2600, educational programs for first reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Superintendent?
All right. The last policy we need to address this evening is policy 2623, student assessment. This is for first reading. Student, superintendent recommends that the board approve policy 2623 for first reading.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Michael got it? Okay. Questions, comments, board members? Hearing none. All in favor of policy 2623, student assessment for first reading, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Thank you. Superintendent, personnel.
Okay. I do not have any changes to update you on for our personnel list. With that said, Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list as presented this evening.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the personnel list as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Superintendent?
I do not have any new positions, so we'll move to our personnel list addendum. I have no changes to that as well. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list addendum as presented this evening.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor of the personnel list addendum as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Okay.
Mr. President, I just wanted to give a real quick update. We did start school today. This is from the professional standpoint. We currently have four elementary teaching positions that are presently posted and vacant. We have one middle school teaching position that's posted and vacant. We have two high school teaching positions that are presently posted and vacant. And since the last day of school of the previous year, we've had 51 professional resignations to this point.
Dr. Campbell, does that include retirement or resignations or severance?
That's just resignations, yes.
I thought so. I just wanted to make that public.
I know one of the comments from our staff was that there were a lot of new faces in the schools.
Okay. Well, I think if we move on to D, we can let everyone go.
You get to come into executive session. Okay. Yep. Once they go into executive session, the staff can take the rest of the evening off and celebrate the first day.
Absolutely.
Yay!
I need a motion?
Motion to go to executive session for personnel.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay. Now, I'm running over to you.